Welcome to the Krista Eskamia Show.
Hello, everyone. Welcome to this week's episode of the Krista Eskamia Show. Thanks so much for being with us today. Thank you for choosing us and for doing three of my favorite things, listening, learning, and growing. So, thank you for being a part of that. We are so excited to introduce today's guest. But first, I want to thank our sponsors. A big special thank you to Kevin Foreman, Foreman Financial, to Rig ID Workwear, Thin FR, Midland Cap Company, Tapestry Hotel Midland, and Omni Midland Hotel. We appreciate your support. And as you know, I always like to say, if you can, support local however you love to do. Because we are all about local. Speaking of local, we're so excited to hear our guest's story today. Joining us is Eric Davidson, and he has a lot of titles. So, we're going to start with the ones that I find always to be the top of the list. And that is father and husband. He is also a senior director at Select Chemistry. He is a geosystems engineer and hydrogeologist. He is also a city councilman for the city of Midland, Sunday school teacher, T-ball coach, foster parent, and I'm sure a list of other things that we'll find out today. Eric, thank you so much for being with us.
Yeah, thank you for having me. So, really looking forward to the conversation and glad to see where this goes.
I am too. I'm so excited. I know we've been talking about it for a while, and I'm so glad we finally got to get our schedules together and do this. Because I think it's so important to learn everyone's story, because everyone has a story and we can all learn from it. So, I would love to find out, first of all, how you got to Midland, Texas?
Yeah, so I, me and my wife came out here in 2017. So, we actually came here by way of West Virginia.
Okay.
So, we went to the University of Texas. So, we're both from the hill country. We actually grew up about three streets down from each other. So, we've known each other since we were 11. And we went to the University of Texas. I graduated.
Throw this up real quick. Yes.
We got a big Saturday coming up. And so, yeah, we went and did that, went there. And I got an opportunity to take a job up in the Northeast. It was something I never thought I would, I would go. I was, and I looked at it, and there's kind of the possibility of maybe going back to the San Antonio area. I had friends that were taking opportunities out in West Texas. And I saw this opportunity in West Virginia. And I asked myself, you know, why not? Like, let's, let's, let's try it out.
I love that.
And so, we did that, did a job up there, worked. And then about three years later, got the opportunity to get transferred down to West Texas.
Which is great. Brings you closer to family.
Well, yeah, I went from a 23-hour drive to about a four-and-a-half-hour drive. And we came out here and just immediately fell in love with the city. And kind of in 2020, got the opportunity, I got asked to, you know, kind of turn off the lights here and move to Shreveport with my company. And we decided to make the decision of, you know, this is home. This is where we want to be. And I'd rather move companies, stay in Midland than, than move to another community. So.
I love that. What was it that you fell in love with? Because I know for everyone, it's something a little bit different. And so, what was it that made you go, this is it. This is where I want to stay?
So, I always default back to the people, right? So, you have, you have those, those phrases, those slogans of, you know, you're crying when you get here, and then you're crying when you leave because of the people.
Right.
I always, I always point it back to, I love this community because this is a community that cares. This is something that we constantly are seeing people that want to pour back into this community. You know, I've had the opportunity to work with, you know, a bunch of different nonprofits here in town. And this is like something nowhere else, right? We have that wildcat mentality. But we take that wildcat mentality of being able to risk it all on everything, right? It's not just businesses, but it's nonprofits, it's churches, it's for the betterment of this entire community. And people are willing to risk it all and pour it back into this community like nothing I've ever seen before.
I agree.
This, these people care. They want to continue the city to grow, and they want to see this, this city flourish and just thrive in a way that's more than just economical, right? And it's, it's something that's just been impactful for my heart, for my wife's heart, for our family. And, you know, we want to be a part of that, those people giving back and caring for, for the community. And so, that's, that's what led us to stay here. And that's what's led us to just fall in love with this place.
I couldn't agree more. You know, when I tell people back, I'm from California, when I tell them like, what was raised at a fundraiser I was emceeing? Over a million dollars. They just, I mean, it's almost in shock how giving back our community is. And I don't think unless you've lived here or here, you really see it. But it's because people care so much about it and want to see good for our community. And that's what I love that you found, you know, just in, in being here, is that that is there. People love families and, and they want to give back. And so, thank you for, for choosing West Texas to be a place to do the, all those things. Speaking of family, I know that there's so much more to your story. I first want to ask, how did, how did you want to become a geologist? What was it that made you say, okay, this is what I want to do? And then we're going to jump into all the family things.
Okay. When it comes to the geology side, I grew up around geologists. So, my dad was a geologist. My uncle was a geologist. My grandpa was a geologist. I felt like Bubba, you know, when it comes to a shrimp boat captain.
I love it.
And so, everybody was a geologist. And so, I looked at it, I'm like, you know, I love rocks. I love doing this. I'm going to be a geologist. And so, went to school, kind of quickly pivoted to engineering, but just kind of kept falling back to geology and just this love to, to figure out just things of the natural sciences of the world and to fully understand everything underneath us. And so, even though I ended up finishing with engineering, I kind of pivoted and not, okay, I want to do engineering, but I want to make sure I keep geology with that as well. So, that's kind of what led to me being a geosystems engineer.
Okay.
And then the hydrogeologist part is, you know, the study of groundwater. So, water is, you know, something that's a necessity that's always going to be there, right? So, I started, you know, understanding the longevity of a career, understanding, you know, what communities are going to be focused on, moving towards that next generation. That's where groundwater just made common sense, just to plug into that geology and engineering aspect as well. So.
I love that. So, you just had that love from the beginning, and it was in the family. Man, I'm a lot older than you, Eric, but I wish I would have known you in college. Fun, real quick story. I actually signed up for Geology One instead of Geology 101. And I got into class, and I'm like, how does everyone know about these rocks? Like, I know nothing. This is supposed to be 101. And so, I, yeah, I could have really picked your brain back then in college. Because did not do so well in that class. But anyway, that's a story for another day. But I think it's great. I love that you had that love from the start and that that's what brought you here. Because really, that's what is the beauty. I mean, my husband always says, I mean, the, besides the people, the beauty of Midland is underground. And boy, is it a beautiful underground. And to be able to understand that, and then to be able to, to do something you're passionate about, I think that's important. What did you learn through college and through those years, those early years, years that got you here that has really sustained with you through, through all that time?
So, I'll pivot instead of, you know, focusing on like the, the professional side of it, the personal side of it. It's something I learned in college and in evolved kind of lessons learned from my college pastor at the time that was mentoring me and another man that was mentoring me at the time, was just a, a hyper-focus of wherever your feet are, make sure you're grounded there and grow there. And so, that, that carried me in college of, you know, this was Austin, was a really fun city to be in.
I bet. Bet that was fun in college.
And so, it was a ton of fun. But there was, there was needs there. And, you know, this is a transient place. You're in a transient part of your life, but stay focused on why you're here. And even though you're not going to be staying here, you can make an impact here. That went up into West Virginia of, you know, working up there, being up there. And it's, it was a little bit harder to find my place there, just because people, atmosphere, everything's different there. And the culture is a lot different there. But how do I ground my feet and how do I grow? And then coming here, and that was just our second week here, was, okay, we found a church, we're finding a community. Let's ground our feet and let's grow here in the city. And that's honestly, that's been the biggest takeaway in college. As 19, 20-year-old, I figured that out. And that has carried me so much more in life than studying rocks or looking at water or really anything professionally, right? It's just grow where your feet are.
Love that. Let, let's talk about growing because your family is always growing.
Yeah, evolving, yeah.
It's evolving. You are a proud parent, and I'll let you, you know, you tell your story. But I love that you're a, a parent and a foster parent. And how did you and your wife come to be foster parents? Because I think it is such a beautiful thing to help children. There's nothing to me, there's nothing better than helping children.
Yeah, and this is, and I just want to give a shout out to this community, right? When I talk about caring, when I talk about, you know, this is a city that cares, this city cares a lot when it comes to the foster community. Whenever it comes to supporting kids that come from a really hard place, a rough place, and just a horrible place. And this city does so much for the foster community that a lot of people don't even realize. And.
And let's shout those, let's shout those organizations out too today. Please feel free to, to do that.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and I will do. And so, that's whenever we started kind of looking at that, we kind of recognized after having our first two kids, you know, we weren't going to be having another kid biologically. And so, but we knew there's still, we, we still had love. We still had bandwidth, right?
Yes.
And we cared. And so, how can we start making an impact? You know, that's what got me into starting to work in kind of the Rope Youth Ministry. I don't know if you know Carl Barowski?
Yes.
Yeah, so it got me kind of.
He's been on the show, actually. He shared his story.
Fantastic. Okay, well, I'm going to start throwing some names out. And yeah, the Victoria would probably been on, on the show with you. And so, sitting down with Carl and just realizing the need whenever it comes to the homeless community here in town, the youth here in this town. So, that's what got me involved with Rope Youth and being able to mentor and being able to pour back into, you know, boys that come from, you know, low socio-economical situations and normally single-parent households. And how can I help out with that? That's what kind of got me involved with, so the MRCCAC, so the Midland Rape Crisis and Children's Advocacy Center have their annual fundraiser, the Wine, Women, and Shoes. And that got me involved with that, right? And that's what really stuck me around is like, here is an impact. Here's one of those fundraisers you're talking about that just raises so much, and so many people care and are willing to, yeah, it's a great event. But so much work and time goes into that to help raise those funds to carry that organization throughout the year. And then, so we started getting hyper-involved with that. And then it kind of really started to pour into, you know, we, we still had love. We still had bandwidth, and it's okay, what are we going to do? And then that's when we really, you know, start thinking about getting into the foster care system. Okay, maybe potentially adopting. And then after we sat through a sermon, that's when it kind of, my wife finally became more open to it. Because for me, I'm always, I have that mentality of, you know, why not us? Why not me? And so, if I, if we see a problem, why can't we be part of that solution? And so, that's usually my fir-, fir-, first thought process. My wife does a really good job of reining me in sometimes. She's Casey, phenomenal at that. Thank you.
I can't wait to meet her. Yes, she sounds amazing.
And so, she'll, she, she reins me in, but that's after that sermon, and we're talking about, you know, these are issues facing our community. This is issues facing our kids. You know, if you really believe in protecting children, protecting unborn children, then you need to put your money where your mouth is, and you need to do something about it. And, you know, there's this need in the community when it comes to foster care, so start filling that need. And so, my church was able to get with High Sky Children, High Sky Children's Ranch. And basically, we put together this program of, hey, if you want to be a babysitter, respite care, foster, foster, adopt, we are going to set up all those trainings where you can come up on Fridays and Saturdays. We'll have childcare, we'll have all this, and we'll fast-track everybody just, and we'll inundate you with trainings.
So, you go through the program first?
So, I went through the program first with them. So, High Sky set all that up. We got, we did all the foster training and got certified in four weeks or five weeks, where most people have to take courses over the course of six months or a year before they get certified. We're able to crunch all that down by just packing it all in. And then it, pretty much after that, it's just been, you know, where, where, where can we plug in? So, we got our first placement about, I think it was about a month after our house got certified.
So, is that, is that what you would suggest to someone that is thinking of, reach out to High Sky?
Reach out to High Sky, reach out to Buckner. Yeah, those are two really good organizations here in town of, you know, there, there's a need beyond just foster care, right? Not everybody is in a place to where they can take in kids on a very seminant-permanent standpoint, right?
Right.
But there's a need, like, so whenever we had two foster girls, right? You have to find a certified babysitter that's certified by the state to watch your kids. You know, you can't just let the 15-year-old down the street watch your kids, no matter how much you want them to. And so, you know, go ahead and get certified to babysit. Go get certified to be respite care. To where if somebody goes out of town and CPS doesn't approve their visit to another state, they have to stay behind and, you know, you can help watch them for a couple of days. And so, there's, there's needs beyond just this large foster.
Right.
There's huge support around the foster community where there's needs, and, and everybody can fill in, right, in this community.
I love, I love that you mentioned that because I feel like that's so important, that, that there's other ways to help. That you don't, if you don't have the means to take someone in full-time, you can help out part-time. And I think that's important because I don't know if that's talked about enough. And so, I'm really glad that you mentioned that. Let's talk about some of the benefits and then some of the hard, because I, I would imagine there are hard, hard days, right? When you're fostering. What, what do you love the most, though, about your experience, first of all? And then we'll talk about the challenges.
Yeah, the thing that we just love the most is you're bringing a child into your home. And there's fear there, right? There's fear on both sides. There's, there's a lot of unknowns. There's going to be fear of the unknown. But you're usually bringing a kid in from just a situation that's been bad.
Yeah.
And through time, you're able to break down walls and break down barriers. And I remember, so our, our last placement, we had, we had these twin, we had twin girls. And so, they've been, it's been about two and a half months since they got placed with some distant relatives. And there's a potential they might be coming back to us. But I remember, you know, that first month, after about a month of having them, we were able, we were working through just a lot of the behavior issues, working through a lot of the, just the stress. And then I come home, and one of the girls just comes sprinting to me and yelling, "Dad, you're home," and just jumped into my arms. And just the fulfillment you get in your heart when you see the, this, this child that came from so much brokenness, still just wants to love. Still just wants somebody to take care of them and hold them, right? And being able to break down those walls over time, which is hard. It's hard. It's stressful.
I can imagine.
There's, there's a lot of pain, but you break through that, and it's just a kid that just wants unconditional love and will reward you with their love. And I remember whenever we had the, whenever we had our twins and, you know, near the end, like, they were holding on to me, and they were asked, they were calling me dad, and they wanted me to hold them and protect them. And just makes it really difficult when they leave, right?
Right.
Because there's a piece of your heart that's getting broken. But knowing that you've done everything you can to pour into them, to change the trajectory of their life to where, okay, you know, they might have come in broken, but I've been able to fill them up with some just nuggets of truth. And I've just been able to pour into them with love unconditionally, knowing that there's really not going to be a lot given back to me. But you fill them with these nuggets of truth and just these nuggets of wisdom that you know they're going to remember down the road, right? And so, that's, that's all, is how do I set them up for more success down the road? And eventually, if that means maybe coming to adoption for us, then that's great, right? But more times than not, it's going to lead to them going somewhere else. And so, it's just a hard truth to navigate sometimes.
Right. But what a blessing for both, for, I mean, for, when you told me that story, I mean, my heart, I could just imagine what it's like for you and your wife, you know, to hear, to hear them, you know, call you dad and to, and to know the impact that you're having on them. But then not knowing if they're staying with you forever. I mean, that, that, there's so many emotions. But what a blessing to even have this, these relationships and to be able to pour into others' lives. So, I'm imagining the challenge is what you just mentioned, the biggest challenges. But.
You're opening your heart to just being broken. That's the, that's the challenge.
Right. But that's what you sign up for. And that, you know, when you look at what are, you know, what you're put on this earth to do, to, to help others, there's no beautiful more way to do it than what you guys are doing. So, oh, that's just so emotional. Sorry, I got emotional hearing your story because I'm just, I can imagine that just the difference that you're making in their lives and how many other children there are out there. And so, I want to, we plugged Buckner, we plugged High Sky. I just want to encourage anyone, if they have that in their heart, you know, what would you say to someone that is thinking about it? What would you suggest that someone that is just, you know, maybe they heard your story and thought, I want to do that. I want to help another, you know, family or child that way. What would you say?
I'd, I'd say, why not you? You know, if you recognize that need, if you feel that in your heart, you know, there's a reason why you're feeling that. So, why not you? You know, you are capable of making change and making an impact. So, go do it. Don't just sit back and wait for somebody else to do it for you.
Yeah.
And, yeah, and it's, it's one of those that, you know, High Sky, Buckner, you know, great resources. There's a lot of really good resources around this community that will help you.
Absolutely.
Throughout this entire process. You're not going to be on your own.
Right. I love that. Thank you. Thank you, Eric, for sharing your story. I appreciate it. We do something called Quote of the Day. And so, I'm going to give you this little, this little fun way to, to see what these quotes mean to you and pick one out at random. I'm sitting here today with Eric Davidson in Midland, Texas, and we are talking all things, but now we're going to talk Quote of the Day. What do you have?
Okay, Nelson Mandela, "I never lose. I either win or learn."
I love this quote. And I can tell you, we randomly put them in here, and I change these up all the time. That one comes out so many times because it is truly one of my favorites. What does that one mean to you?
So, that's, that's a, not Nelson Mandela coming from him, right? But a version of that is something that I carry in my entire life, right? I always call them lessons learned.
Okay.
And so, what lessons learned can I take away from something? You know, if I succeed, there's still some lessons learned to, you know, how do I do better next time? But especially if I fail, how am I going to learn from this experience? How am I going to take those lessons learned, apply them the next time, and ensure that I'm going to succeed? But if I fail again, there's more lessons learned to take.
So true. And that, and I feel like, don't you just feel, and, and maybe this is just because I'm getting old. But the older I get, I feel like there is a lesson learned every single day. Like, every single day, I'm, whatever experience or whatever, you know, I always say, you know, you know, life's going to throw things at you. And you can either tackle the day or let the day tackle you. I want to tackle the day, and I want to learn something from it, right? And at the end of the day, I go, whoa, I didn't see that one coming. Like, you know, sometimes. What, what is the biggest lesson you've never seen coming that you thought, whoa, didn't see, didn't see that one coming? But boy, I'm glad I learned it.
Oh, gosh. That's profound question. Biggest lesson learned I've ever take, took away.
Yeah.
Wow. I mean, you'd have to imagine it would be something in marriage.
Yes. How long have you and your wife been married?
We have been married for nine years.
Congratulations. That's wonderful.
Yeah, I was actually just having a conversation about this because, like I said, we've known each other since we're 11 years old. And so, we're coming up at a point in our lives to where, you know, we started dating when we were in our teens. And so, we're coming up to a point in our lives where we've been in a relationship with one another longer than we've, have not been in a relationship in our life.
Yes.
So, we're about to hit that, that crossover.
Yes.
You know, a little bit, a little bit earlier than most people.
Right, right.
But yeah, I mean, I, you know, we saw each other through, through the weird times of growing up, right?
The awkward teen years.
Awkward teen years. So, I mean, it's, it's one of those, that's a big takeaway.
Oh, I love that.
Realization that has happened.
That is a big realization. So, with that said, what is the biggest lesson in marriage that you would say you've learned?
So, the, the biggest lesson in marriage I've learned is, you know, when we've talked to a lot of people, it's about like 50/50 when it comes to relationships and marriage. Marriage is 100/100. It is, each party is pouring all of themselves into the other party and just, and just working just sacrificially for each other. And so, when I really think of, you know, lesson learned at the early part of my marriage was, you know, I kept a mental chart. It was like a, you know, we're going to call it the, the Davidson, you know, sticker chart.
Okay.
You know, and so, I was mentally giving myself stickers for these tasks I was doing and then keeping the mental track.
Like wash dishes.
Yeah, washing dishes, folding clothes, cleaning, vacuuming, ironing. And so, I was keeping, you know, the, the sticker board in my mind of like, oh, you know, another gold star for Eric. And then also keeping track and then like just coming to the realization that like, that's horrible. You can't just like track a reward-based system.
Right.
Of, and say like, well, I've done more today, you know, look at me.
But I love that you realized that. That's good. How long, how many years in did it take you to realize that?
It was like a solid year and a half or two years. And then finally, and she's like, have you been tracking this, this whole time? And I'm like, well, in my head, I have. Like, I can tell you what the score was last month.
Right.
Like, and, and just realizing that, like.
This is great.
It's not, it's not about who's doing the most. It's about everybody putting in all they can and living, you know, just fully sacrificial for each other. Has been the biggest takeaway about marriage and that you can't have a fruitful marriage if someone's keeping score. And you can't have a fruitful marriage, you know, if you're only putting in half of what you got. It is, that's, you have to put it all in. You have to be able to.
Mic drop. Right there, Eric. Mic drop.
I'll take that. Yeah, put it all in and just live and sacrifice for your family.
I love that. That is beautiful. That really is because, and I, and great advice, no matter how many years you've been married. I don't get, if you've been keeping track for 20 years, stop keeping track.
There's no way. Nobody's going away from that.
That's right. I love that. I love that. Okay, we're going to, we're going to switch gears a little bit. We're going to talk community. We, as you know, if you listen to the Krista Eskamia Show, we do not talk politics on, on our show, but we will talk community all day long. What, and you are a Midland City Councilman. And so, I want to ask you, what do you hope? What is your dream for our city? Remember, we're not talking politics. We're just talking dreams. Because I am a dream big kind of girl right here.
There we go.
So, tell, tell me your biggest dream for our community.
So, my biggest dream for Midland and what really led me into wanting to get involved on the local level, and I'm fine with not talking politics. I'll high-five to that. And so, but just, you know, dreaming big about this community is, I want to see a Midland that you can, Midland has an abundance of great jobs here in town. But a Midland where you can have a great job, you can raise your family, and you can stay here. And Midland has everything that your family is going to need to thrive. Whether that's sports complexes, you know, for people here in the community that can't afford to go to Abilene, can't afford to go to Lubbock, can't afford to go to Dallas on the weekend for a sports game. We have facilities that everybody here in Midland, no matter what background you come from, can utilize. We have stores. So, instead of you having to take, take a weekend trip to Lubbock and spend gas money, waste your time on the road to go to a Costco, we can bring a Costco here and not only make it safer, but drive down the total cost of goods here in town and make this city more affordable. And then, you know, ultimately have all of the quality of place needs that we have for the future generations of Midlanders. For whether that's water infrastructure, you know, ensuring that we have a really strong police force here in this town that is fully staffed, which is something that I want to dream, that's a very short-term dream for me is to ensure that we have a very fully-staffed police force here in the near term. But I mean, ultimately, it just comes down to, I ran on a platform, and I've really been pushing since being on the city council, that I want a community that my kids can come back to.
Yes.
That they can start a family, have kids, and raise their kids here in this town.
Right. And as a parent, I think that's our dream, right? Like, I would love for our children, you know, after they go to college and they start their career, I would love for them to choose to come back here to Midland or go to college here. And we have great educational options. There's, there's so much beauty to Midland that I'm with you. I hope that, I mean, that's my dream is that one or all four would want to come back to Midland someday, right, sweetie? That's our dream. And I think, you know, and you mentioned some things, you know, bringing those big city things here. I want to talk about, we, we have so much to do. You know, one of my, I, I'm, I'm an ultra-positive person. I don't know if you know that about me, Eric. I'm like, I see the glass, I mean, the glass is always at the top half-full. It's always overflowing. And I want to see people believe that too about Midland. Like, I want, I, I don't want to hear anyone ever say, there's nothing to do in Midland. Because I'm like, there's something to do in Midland every single day. You just have to look for. And we're, we're bringing more things to Midland every, you know, every year, it seems like. How do we change that perception? Because I, I preach it a lot on this show. Probably people are going, okay, Krista, we know you love Midland. But I, I feel like I want everyone to feel that way. How, how do we change the perception?
So, it starts, a lot of it starts with communication, right? And I, I kind of, I got, brought this up during a city council, our meeting this past, our last city council meeting this past Tuesday. We're talking about downtown. We're talking about kind of the large strategic plan for different stuff. And a lot of it just came down to communication is, and I even mentioned, I'm like, the Davidson family goes downtown for free concerts all the time.
Absolutely.
Like, we take advantage of a good old Midland free concert.
Right. Basin PBS does so many wonderful.
The Heritage Festival. I mean, we had a blast. And, you know, not everybody knows about that.
Right.
And part of that falls on the city, right? We need to do a better job of communicating that information.
And I have seen that more lately, just to want it from an outsider in. I have definitely seen more of that. I feel like I'm, I'm starting to see more, you know, just like, here's what's coming up. Here's what's to do. And I think the more people that do, can do that, the better. Like, because not everybody is going to see everybody's thread, right? Or posts. But if enough people post about it, enough people share it.
And then, yeah, building momentum, that snowball kind of growing.
I love that.
And one of the things, and, you know, feel free to use this down the road if you want to.
Okay.
But one of the things that I like, from when it comes to a professional standpoint, when it comes to like personal everything, just making sure that I'm not filling myself with a bunch of energy vampires.
Ooh, that's good.
Just people that are just sucking the life out of me.
Yes.
And so, just making sure that we're able to teach and educate those energy vampires that are just sucking the life out of other people here in town and just kind of spreading, spreading that narrative that there's nothing to do.
Right.
Like, we came to Midland when we were 26 and 27 years old. I think I got that right. Ish, ish.
The only person that can fact-check this is your wife right now.
We got this. And so, ish, it was 26, 27-ish.
Okay.
And we came here, and that was like the narrative I was being told by all these younger people I was meeting at church, all these younger people I was meeting around town was, you know, there's nothing to do in Midland, so we just leave on the weekends. We never got a chance to really experience that because the first week we came to Midland, we got pregnant. And so, we, we started growing a family really fast. And that caused us to search and seek after stuff and just realizing like, Midland's a great place. Midland has phenomenal people that want to invite you to their home, that want to have a community with you. Midland has all these different activities here, but we just have. Midland has all these different activities here, but we just have people in town that are just being, you know, Midland energy vampires. They're not, they don't want to be the energy. They don't want to encourage, they don't, they don't want to see the potential of all this stuff.
They want to do this.
They just want to push down and they would just rather just get out of town, right? And it's, you're gonna have that in every city. You're gonna have people that are always moving, but there's just a large percentage here of people that are very vocal about just pushing Midland down.
Right.
And so we gotta change that narrative.
Yeah, let's flip it.
Let's flip it. We have, we have exciting stuff and you talk about it all the time, right? So I, I, I know, I know you already know all this, but like, I just look at it and I'm like, we're getting the first zoo in twenty five years in the United States.
How cool is that?
How cool is that? Like, I want to have a parade for the giraffe.
Yes.
When it's coming down the road with its head sticking out of the, the crate. I want us to have a parade for that little guy.
I agree. Let's celebrate.
Let's celebrate these changes that are happening.
And I think that's a great point is that we need to celebrate change more. I think just, you know, in life, and I'm guilty of this, change, I'm like, oh, change. You know, but you have to go, oh, change, this is a good thing, right? So if you change the narrative on it and go, let's celebrate all these good things instead of question it or why this, why that, why not? I like your why not, you know, why not me? Well, why not us? Why not have a zoo in Midland, Texas?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, there's so many ways that we can look at it and, but to celebrate it, I love that. So I am pro parade. Let's do that.
All the kids get to name the giraffe.
Yes, yes.
I don't know if that's, yeah. But we'll stamp it here.
I love that idea. I love that idea. Let's talk to the zoo people. Okay. We do something called Question of the Day. And so again, you're just gonna pick at random a question, you answer it. And voila, what'd you get? Oh, you got the wise card.
No, we're.
You don't like that one?
Well, it goes, it goes back to.
We already answered it. Okay.
Combination of lessons learned and energy vampires. Just throw those. All right. Uh, how do you motivate yourself daily?
Oh, okay.
That is a great question.
Good question. How do you motivate yourself daily?
Depends on the day. Um, yeah, that is, that is a great question. So it really depends, right? Um, I feel like the more stressed I get, the harder the previous day, that just means I need to wake up earlier the next day and make sure that I get on the right footing.
Don't carry yesterday's, you know, bad or negative thoughts into today's. I love that.
And so, and with the main thing of, I can't take the stress of yesterday and, and, you know, start my day off like that. So on those days that it's the worst, that means I'm waking up earlier. Like, I'm waking up earlier, I'm going in, like, I'm reading my Bible, I'm praying longer and I'm having more time to just reflect on myself. Um, the, you know, the harder, the worse the day is, that just means the stronger the start I gotta have. Um, and so, you know, I always look at the mind, body, soul, spirit, you know, balance.
Right.
And so that's where, you know, being able to wake up, being able to go work out, being able to go, you know, it's gonna be a long day. Let's, let's go for a run. Let's just go ahead and just process all that information outside while I'm running around. Um, let's go work out with my neighbor and let's just process those thoughts together, right? In the darkness while everybody in our family is still sleeping.
Yes.
Um, so yeah, how do I get motivated by the day? Mind, body, spirit and spiritual. That's, that's how I get motivated. And if I, if, if I'm able to get myself on that right footing before I have, you know, a four year old, a five year old, six year old come waltzing in, rubbing their eyes and telling dad, good morning, then that's a win, right? Because that means that if I'm setting the tone for the day for my family, that's a win.
Absolutely. Well, that's great. That is a great way to start the day. Thanks for sharing that. I love it. I love that. And I think it's just a great reminder to not take yesterday's, uh, yesterday's junk into today because today is a treasure all of its own. And so let's, let's start fresh. Let's get up, let's get the mind started on the right foot.
Yeah, and that's my biggest thing is I, I know people always talk about, you know, don't go to bed angry. I've never had that problem. Like, it is, I think at night, like, you just gotta clear it all out.
Absolutely.
And I, I, people get frustrated. My wife, sorry, Casey, gets really frustrated with this sometimes of like, a hard day. It's like, okay, let's take two minutes by myself and I'm gonna forget about everything and I'm going to bed.
Right.
And it's like, no matter who made me mad, no matter what happened the day, like, I'm resetting my body in those last few minutes so that I can get up the next day and feel good and get going.
I love it. All right, Eric, we do something called, uh, favorite things. But before we do that, and this is, I'm just gonna throw out, I throw out of, you know, tell me your favorite book, podcast, different things like that. But before we do that, tell us a fun fact about Eric we would not read. Oh, wait, Al, yeah, Al was about to leave. He's like, nope, I'm waiting for the fun fact. A fun fact about you we would not read on your bio.
A fun fact about me, not read on my bio, well, I already got rocks in there, I got water in there, so that rules that, that kind of weird stuff out. Um, a fun fact about me is, so I actually have done ultra marathons in the past.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very cool.
And so it's one of those.
And tell me and forgive my lack of knowledge on ultra marathons. That is how many miles?
Well, so generally anything above twenty six miles.
Okay.
So, you know, it ranges anywhere from, people do fifty Ks, you know, which is, you know, a little over thirty one miles. Um, all the way up into like, I had a buddy that did, oh, gosh, it was in Utah. He's, I'm sorry, Mark, I forgot the name of the race, but it was two hundred and fifty miles.
Is it that not Moab? It is Moab. Okay. Moab two forty. Okay, yes. Yes.
Yeah, I did Moab two forty. And so.
That's a lot of miles.
It's a lot of miles, right? And it's not, that's not flat ground either.
No, that's a lot of hills and we don't have hills in West Texas.
There's like two streets.
If you're listening and never been here, we have no hills in West Texas.
And so the, and so what I like about that is, you know, believe it or not, I mean, when it comes to like ultra marathons, it comes to like running, it's not really a physical thing.
Right, it's mental.
It's all mental.
It is.
Like, I know people, like, disagree with me. Uh, luckily, we got a really strong Midland Run Crew that would agree with everything I'm about to say. Thank you.
Shout out Midland Run Crew.
Midland Run Crew.
I follow y'all. I don't run with you, but I follow you on Instagram.
So, like, it's a mental barrier. Like, anybody can not even, ninety five percent of America can probably go out and run a marathon, right? Like, you're gonna hit a mental wall.
Right.
Um, it's just like that, whether it's like twenty six miles, whether it's fifty miles, whether it's seventy five, whether it's a hundred miles.
There's gonna be a wall.
There's gonna be a wall and it's just a mental barrier.
So what do you say to yourself? Because I, I've only done a half and I, I hit the wall at mile nine. Let me tell you, mile nine, I was like, oh, my goodness, how much longer is this? And so, I mean, what do you say to yourself when you're like at mile forty two?
I just, so actually, it's the, okay, so mile forty two, so actually the last race I did. So at mile forty two, um, I, I, I hit a mental wall.
Okay.
Just a mental barrier. Like, I was in perfectly like, physical, good enough shape to just keep going. I just hit this barrier. And I just went back to all the people that love me. And I just started, I just started thinking about all the people over the years that have just poured into me, that just love me, that encouraged me. Everything that God has done for me, all the gifts I've been blessed with. And I started sobbing. So I'm forty two miles in.
And you're just crying like a baby.
Crying like a baby as I'm running, just thinking about all the people that have made an impact for me and have pushed me along the way. And if they could push me, I can keep pushing my body. And so that's the like, the most like beautiful thing about like ultras and these endurance races is you reach this like, just physical, mental exhaustion. And like, you reach this state where it's just you and your thoughts.
Right.
And what are you gonna do with those thoughts?
Yes.
Are you gonna just quit? Or are you gonna use those thoughts and just keep moving you forward and keep pushing you forward? And it's a really, it's, it's a really primal like thing.
I bet. It is an emotional thing.
Yeah, and it's just one of those where like, I've, I, you know, I never thought I would be just weeping, like, just crying like a baby.
Right.
But like, I did that and then I just kept going because those people and the thought process of just how much love has been poured into me in my entire life just kept me going.
I love that. That's beautiful. I'm gonna have to borrow that. Next time I hit the wall. That I'm, that's so crazy. That, that was the number I picked. I love that. Thanks for sharing that. Um, I, I smile when I run. It's this weird thing. Like, I smile. So I smile more when I'm like hitting the wall. I don't know why.
Too, like, especially if you, uh, fuel yourself with a competitive drive.
Uh huh.
Like, cause like, I'll, like, when I, last race I did, I was like, running with somebody and I was just playing mental games, like, oh, this guy is like, just thinking like, he's gonna beat me. I was just using that as fuel. This guy doesn't even know my name, right? But I'm just using that as fuel to keep going. But like, if I was running next to somebody that's just smiling, I'd be like, oh, man, they're just emotionally just beating me down.
They're killing it. They're smiling. Well, I just think, I'm just gonna smile through the pain.
Straight killer over there, just smiling.
Oh, but I get humbled. And when the, when the eighty year olds run by me or the dad with the stroller with two kids and one on his backpack. You've been there, right? Yeah, we've been there. We've done, we, we only do like five Ks, ten Ks, but, uh, when, when, there's nothing more humbling than being passed. But or a kid, a nine year old. I've had nine year olds just run right by me and I'm like smiling at him, okay, kid.
Yeah, I asked five K, like some seventy five year old passed me in like mile two, you know, so.
I know. He just, he just shook his head. He goes, I just got passed by seventy five.
You have your pace. You're not gonna deviate from your pace. That's, that's the perfect mentality right there.
That's right. But the thing I love most about the runs, I love the energy of it. Speaking of energy, Energy City is coming up. Uh, hopefully this will air before it, not after it. Um, but if it runs after, or after it, good job to all you runners. But getting out there with all the runners and feeling the energy of, there's nothing better and you're supporting good causes and you're raising money. I, I, I could go on and on about what I love about runs, but it's not about me. It's about you, Eric Davidson. Tell us your favorite restaurant in West Texas.
Oh, that's, oh, that's combative right there.
I know, it's a tough one.
It's actually not as bad. So, uh, we do an icebreaker, uh, in our small group whenever we have someone new that comes in.
Uh huh.
And so the last icebreaker we did was tell us your least favorite restaurant in town. What is the worst restaurant in town? I will not repeat anything that was said. Uh, when I think of like my favorite restaurant in town, I mean, it evolves. You know, it evolves with the seasons, um, especially the temperature outside. But I, I'd say right now, my favorite restaurant is Opal's.
Okay.
Going with Opal's right now, especially Opal's basement.
And Brussels sprouts at Opal's are so good. The food, yeah, we haven't been to the basement. Yeah, we always eat at the top for the one.
Always, that's like, that's been, now is like our date spot is, we go to the basement, make a, they make a great martini.
Okay.
It's a different environment. Have like, the Brussels sprouts are amazing.
Oh, they are, aren't they? Yes. Thank you, Chip. Those are awesome.
And just like, the food's great and it's the basement, basement, there we go.
Okay. We're good to try it. That'll be our new place. That's what I love hearing. I love hearing everyone's favorites because, um, I, I can tell, we've lived here, I've been here twenty six years. My husband grew up in Monahans and has lived here, what, thirty something years in Midland, sweetie? He's busy. How many years have you been here now?
Well, I sandwiched in the city in eighty seven.
Okay, so a long time. But there are restaurants we have not.
More than thirty.
More than thirty. There are restaurants we have not eaten at, right? I mean, there just are. There's, because you, you get in your, we call it our little bubble. You just stay in your little bubble. So get out of your bubble and we're gonna get out of ours and go try Opal's basement.
And then Juju's just opened back up.
Love Juju's.
I went there. I didn't even, I, I apologize. I didn't even know they're renovating. And I walk in, I'm like, what just happened here? And like, they just opened that week for the soft opening.
Oh, that's great. Good timing. Nailed it. Yeah. Yeah, he's never, I've picked you up. I've brought you a salad from there before, but yeah, we're gonna go. Cause now they just remodeled.
Good spicy chicken sandwich.
Love that. Okay, favorite coffee shop?
Oh, Far West.
Far West.
Oh, that one was easy.
That was easy, easy question, easy answer.
Little location near my house and a lot of the baristas have gotten to know me. Like, I love a good, that was, so living in West Virginia, you had your neighborhood bars.
Right.
And that was an experience of, you know, I don't know if y'all have ever lived anywhere with a neighborhood bar.
Was it like Cheers where sometimes you wanna know where, or go where everybody knows your name?
Like, everybody would, everybody knew each other at these neighborhood bars and they'd all go drink together. Um, Huggy Bear, the like basketball, the basketball coach, sorry.
I thought that was the name of the bar. I'm like, what a great name for a bar.
Great, great reference. Huggy Bear, uh, was the basketball coach at WVU for years. And he would, and he would, he was a basketball coach, like one of the Hall of Fame. He's a Hall of Fame college basketball coach and he would just drink beer, get a pitcher of beer at his neighborhood bar.
Wow.
And so just the camaraderie there was really cool to see. I never experienced anything like that. So that's what like Far West has kind of become for me, right? It's like, I see people from the neighborhood. We all go there. A lot of other people go there. But I see a lot of my neighborhood people there. And it's great coffee.
It is good coffee. It is awesome. And just the atmosphere.
Columbia number seventy two, that one is.
Okay. We'll have to try it. Columbia number seventy two.
I think it's seventy two.
Favorite movie, favorite inspirational movie?
Oh, favorite inspirational movie? Oh, no.
There's so many.
Especially when you said inspirational.
Well, it doesn't have to. It could be favorite movie. I just think inspirational. I think everything's inspirational. It could be favorite movie, doesn't, it, it doesn't have to be inspirational.
Okay. Now, we'll, we'll go favorite inspirational. No, oh, gosh, I can't go inspirational. Because then it just sounds bad. Um, so my wife took a cinema class in college.
Okay.
Ever since then, you know, really caused me to look at movies a little differently. Because she used to be, all of a sudden she became a movie buff.
She's an expert, yes.
Semester and all of a sudden she's an expert.
As we all are after one semester, yes.
So like, I really like the film style and like the narration style of Quentin Tarantino.
Oh, yeah.
So that's when he said inspirational.
This is not inspirational.
Not inspirational.
But good cinema, I mean, the, the, just the, the way that they shoot, the visual.
The story. And then also when you start looking at a Wes Anderson film, I love his, uh, color palette of his movies. It's just really, really, I'm gonna say cool. And I'm not a movie buff, so that's a bad term.
All right, cool, cool covers it.
He can tell a great story and like, you know, just really good cinematography and color. So those are the kind of films I like.
Very good.
Not inspirational.
So favorite, so with that said, favorite Quentin Tarantino film?
Oh, man, okay. Favorite Quentin Tarantino film. Uh, I'm gonna go. Oh, gosh. I'm not gonna offend anybody here.
No, no, it's Quentin Tarantino. I mean, he does all the offending. But it, I mean, there's so many.
There are so many. Uh, I'm not allowed, I, I don't know if I'm allowed to say that word on your podcast. I don't wanna, uh, jump the PG rating.
I don't even know if there are ratings.
Okay, well, so Glorious Bastards is one that's, yeah.
I've heard of it, but I've not seen that one.
Yeah.
Okay, so good one?
Mm hmm. It's a good one.
Okay, Reservoir Dogs. Have you seen Reservoir Dogs?
Reservoir Dogs, Pulp Fiction.
Fiction. Yeah, gotta go Pulp Fiction.
Yeah, Glorious Bastards.
Okay, so now we see another movie I'm gonna have to add to the list. Gotta go see it.
Wes Anderson. Let's go. So Moonrise Kingdom is like a really, I love the fact he always uses Bill Murray and he has his typical cast of characters he always uses.
Don't you love Bill Murray?
Owen Wilson. It's just, it's hilarious.
Oh, yeah.
But yeah, Moonrise Kingdom is really good. Um, and then, uh, yeah, fantastic Mr. Fox, the claymation.
Haven't seen it.
So he's done multiple claymation movies. And it's, you wanna talk about just a passion project, because you're taking individual pictures of clay caricatures and moving them at tiny inches at a time.
Interesting.
Just, it's stills that come together as a movie.
Okay.
So George Clooney is, uh, the main character and fantastic Mr. Fox.
Okay, gonna have to see both of those. Thank you for sharing those. Okay, hype song. What's your favorite song? You're walking in a place. What's, what, what is the song you would want playing?
So I'm gonna go, it depends.
Okay.
So there's two.
Okay.
And they're so far from each other, it sounds bad. So I, I kinda talked about this, like, kinda walking into a city council meeting or walking into like a really important meeting for work, I like to listen to, uh, Oceans by Hillsong United.
It's a beautiful song. Yeah.
It's a beautiful song and the extended cut is, and you just, it's just this building and constant building and it just kind of recenters my heart.
Okay.
And it refocuses on why am I doing this?
I love that.
What is, what does God need me to do in this moment?
Love that.
And who, who all am I doing this for? And so that just recenters me spiritually. And it just kind of, but it builds me up because the song just keeps building and building and building. Her voice just keeps getting louder. And you're worshiping and you're just loving.
I love that.
And so that's like my ultimate, like, this is important. Let's recenter myself.
Yeah.
Um, after.
Uh huh.
The mission, after the mission is done, the walking out the door is gonna be Seven and Seven by Turnpike Troubadour.
Okay, I don't know that songs, but I'm gonna have to go listen to it now.
That is one like.
Does this make you feel like you did good?
The day is done.
The day is done.
Let's hop in the truck and roll down the windows and put on some Turnpike Troubadours and put on some Seven and Seven. And that is, the day is done. We're complete. So, but they're so far from each other.
I love that, but I think that's life, right? Life is, uh, it's, it's here, it's here. I mean, um, I think there's beauty in that. So that's awesome. Okay, favorite life hack. There's one thing you want to share with everybody, a life hack that makes your day go smoother. What is it?
Uh, just tell my wife I love her so much. That is, yeah.
That was so sweet.
That is, yeah.
That is one of the sweetest life hacks I think I've heard from a guest here on the show.
Yeah, just, just poor, poor love. And so that is, that's, that's my life hack.
Al missed it. He walked out. Favorite life hack?
What?
Telling his wife he loves her every morning. I said, that is the sweetest life. I mean, seriously, sweetest life hack we've heard.
And that's, that's my life hack.
It'll make your day better, right? It makes everyone's day better. I love that. That is so good.
And then I was able to, this morning, I was, was able to do that. And then I was able, I had my daughter surprise her with Far West little, you know, once you get nine coffees, you get a first one. Tenth free. So daughter surprised her with a full little Far West card. So she gets two free coffees along with a little love encouragement.
Very sweet. That is awesome.
My five-year-old daughter told my wife, she's like, I know you'd like it.
That is sweet. Oh, okay. We're, we're running out of time. We're getting close, close to the end. Um, but, oh wait, Al's got a question.
I wanna know how, how good, how you got good at golf?
Oh yeah, I heard you're a good golfer. Another fun fact that you did not out yourself on. Al says you're a great golfer. How did you get into golf?
How did, so I grew up around golf. So my mom was, uh, so my mom was actually a tennis pro. So my sister played college tennis, my mom played college tennis, and then she was a tennis pro at a country club. And so I was the youngest. I was the baby in the family. And so I kind of grew up around my mom always teaching tennis. And so instead of going to like a daycare, instead of going that, I would just sit there on the side of the court and she'd give me a couple cars and some balls and I would just sit there and watch her teach and.
So you're pretty good at tennis?
If I try, if, if I, if I like rededicate myself, I have a pretty good tennis game. But that kinda introduced me to my love for golf. And then really, once I moved to the hill country, so I was born in Corpus Christi and then I moved to the hill country. And just being around like this beautiful nature and just being outside and being able to walk and play golf and just really get away and escape everything. To where like a hill country, you could like be in a town and then all of a sudden you're on a golf course just surrounded by trees and deer and creeks and it's just beautiful.
Isn't it?
And so, yeah, and so that's.
My happy place.
Utter joy being on that. So that's, that's what really got me into my love for golf was just being around my mom, being around tennis and golf. And then just, you know, enjoying nature. But yeah, love golf, love to play. So usually play a lot of tournaments out here.
Awesome. Do you have, have you had a hole in one? How many?
I've only had one.
Okay, that's good.
It was at the golf course of Texas. Um, which is west of, I don't know if it's still called that. Maybe, maybe Al can fact check that. It is west of San Antonio. Like a.
Military base?
Like near, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, he played in a tournament there. That's right, that's right. Oh, it's beautiful. That is a beautiful, right? Isn't it, wasn't it?
I mean, it's, it's all comparative, right? Like, what do you, what's your baseline of beauty?
Well, I guess mine's pretty low by looking at both of your faces. Cause I think it was. Well, no, not lock and tear beautiful, but it was a pretty course. You did not just call it a great personality golf course. That's funny.
But yeah, I got a hole in one there. I remember, I think I was thirteen, I was fourteen. High school, hit an eight iron and it was a hundred and thirty-eight yards uphill. So I didn't actually see it go in. I just saw it bounce and then disappeared.
That's so cool. How fun. I love that. It's gotta be a great feeling someday. What's your lowest score?
Oh gosh, uh, so, well, on eighteen, the lowest score I've had is seventy.
That's good.
I'm not, yeah.
That's great.
I mean, it's, well, yeah.
That's really good. Yeah, that's good.
That's like hill country golf, you know, like trees, rough.
A seventy, yeah, it's good. Yeah, sixty-five in West Texas.
Yeah, West Texas sixty-five, but yeah.
Anything under par is good. Let me just say that. Anything under par is good. That's awesome.
My best nine, I was five under. That was at Fair Oaks Ranch Country Club on the back nine. Cause I remember that, cause I shot off forty-two on the front and I was so mad. And then I shot five under on the back. Well, I guess, so these are around.
Yeah, take it.
Up and down there.
Take it, exactly. Um, I, I would know, we could talk about golf all day, so I won't, I, I won't ask you a million other questions. But if there was a dream course for you to play, what would your dream course be?
A dream course? That's a great question. Um, I've actually, so this is, you know, I guess this, this isn't dream big. Um, I've never played La Jolla's.
Oh, it's, it is a dream. Like you feel like you're in a dream when you go to La Jolla's. Oh, it's, it's one of our favorite places.
It's not a dream big dream. It's a, it's a attainable.
That's an attainable, yeah, you need to go make that happen. Take your family, they will love it. It's beautiful. When you leave, we always say you feel like you're in God's country there. And when you, when you come back, your, your soul is refreshed. You have seen the mountains. You've seen the beauty of it. The course is amazing. So yeah, ta, you need to go.
Is that, is that a Al fact check right there? It's a beautiful course?
Yeah, his, his best friend Steve Smith, he, he built it years ago. Um, and, um, and we, we lost Steve a couple of years ago. But he built a great place. I mean, let me tell you, it is incredible. It is, and, and you gotta go see Clay Henry, the beer drinking goat. There, that's the mayor. The mayor is a beer drinking goat. Yeah, so yeah, okay, that's it. You, you guys are going. That dream is coming true. Um, Eric, we're coming to the end of our podcast and I, and I hate this because it's, it's been so much fun. I've really gotten to, uh, love getting to hear your story and get to know you better and see your heart for West Texas. I love that. Is there anything that I didn't ask you? And that you thought, oh, I really wanna share this with, uh, you know, with everyone here in West Texas and beyond?
So, no. I, I just wanna thank you for allowing me to come on here. Um, it's something that, you know, we've been talking about for a while. And just your attitude and your, your view and your lens that you see Midland through is just addictive, right? And that's something that when I look, look at Midland, when I look at the, really the future that we have here, it's exciting. And that's one where, you know, for all the people out there, like, and just being able to understand the excitement of this growing city, the, the booming economy that, and diversification that's happening here. Like we're building satellites that go into space.
How cool is that?
We're having, uh, we're having aerospace companies come out here to start doing testing for the military NASA at Mach two speeds. Like we have a spaceport. We have the, you know, the energy that drives the world comes out of here. It is, it is crazy to think about. And on top of that, we have some of the most amazing people. And so I just wanna, I just wanna remind everybody, like this is, this is an amazing place. Like Midland, Midland is home for us. And it should be home for everybody. It should be home, home for each one of y'all. Like this is a place that I wanna keep pouring into. You know, even if I'm not on city council, even if I'm not on the like, I will continue pouring in this community because this is the community we love. And we stayed here when we could've gone somewhere else. Because we chose the people and the people have just given back so much more than we ever could've expected. You will get back what you put into stuff. And you put into Midland and it'll be multiplied in benefits of what you get back. So.
Well said, well said. Well, thank you for all you're doing. We appreciate you pouring into West Texas and serving our community. Because I, I don't know if people don't realize this, but it's not a high-paid job to serve on city council.
We get a Chick-fil-A dinner once a month for the kids.
Yes, and, but you do it because you love it. I mean, you still have your job, your family, you're still doing all the things. You're still teaching. You're still a T-ball coach. You're still a Sunday school teacher. You, you're doing all these things, but you're doing it for our community because you love it. And for that, I'm so appreciative to you and all of our city council members and our mayor because it is a highly, um, what, what is the, what is the word I'm looking for? Unpraised job. You know, you, it's, you, and it should be praised more. Because I, I think everyone should go sit in a city council meeting. What you guys do in there on, on a, on a, you know, base, you know, every time that you're sitting together is amazing to me. I sit there and go, wow, I didn't realize they're making that decision. Or, oh, I didn't realize that that was something that they're doing. Oh, look at they're honoring this community organization today. That's fantastic. So it is truly, it is fun to watch. It is something that we should appreciate more. I guess that's what the word I was looking for. You should get more appreciation. So, um, thank you for doing it. He's like, I'm not doing it for appreciation, but I really do feel like our council deserves it. And so, um, so if you see one, thank one. That's my point. Well, thank you, Eric, for being here today. This was awesome. And we encourage all of you to, um, you know, to, to follow Eric and you, and follow the city of Midland. They really are doing a lot, um, communication wise to let everyone know all the wonderful things that are happening in West Texas. And, um, and just get involved. I think that's the important thing is get involved. Um, if you're involved in a group, you will never say there's nothing to do ever again. So, um, hopefully I will see you soon at a, an event near, near you. And then near you, Eric. So thank you again. Appreciate your time. And I cannot wait to meet your lovely wife. I love all the things you said about her today. She sounds amazing and. And we wish you and your family just a wonderful and, and blessed rest of the year. So thanks for being here. I wanna thank everyone that was listening today. Share this with someone you love, we love, and hit the subscribe button, please. Hit the little, there's a little button, just right down there. Hit the subscribe button, share it with someone. We can all listen and learn and grow together. That's what life's about. I mean, when I say I learn something every day, it's, I, I, I look forward to it cause I know I have a lot to learn. And so I love that I get to learn from amazing guests like Eric. And, uh, and really get to share it with all of you. So please keep, keep the goodness going and let's continue to share the amazing things that are happening in West Texas. Thank you to our podcast sponsors. A big shout out to Kevin Foreman, Foreman Financial, to Tapestry Hotel Midland, to Rig ID Workwear, Thin FR, Midland Cap Company, joincapclub.com and Omni Midland Hotel. We appreciate your support and wherever you are, support local. Because when you support local, you're supporting, um, someone's family. And that's, to me, what is, what is so important about supporting locals. So thank you for doing that. Uh, I think that's it. Anything else, Al? Nope, that's a wrap, uh, from us. We wanna thank you for joining us. Don't forget to dream big, believe and never give up. You make it a great day.